Mics are on.
Mics are on. Okay, we'll call a meeting to order, please. Call a meeting to order, please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Schnelly?
Here.
Bano?
Here.
Smithback?
Here.
Holda?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mozan?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
And Ben Kampen and Majeska are out tonight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. First one is November 2nd, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the minutes from December 7th, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna move on. I'm gonna read this complete statement tonight regarding the public appearances and the community input. This is an item that we do at the beginning of every meeting. I'll read it this part. The part of this, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the planning commission, including items both on and off the agenda, under the open meetings law. This agenda item allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedure matters relating to information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on future commission agenda. However, commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this particular time, and with a three-minute minimum or maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. For agenda items, with a public hearing, which we have two tonight, the public will be invited to provide comment at that time. For the remainder of the agenda items, the planning commission will not invite public comments. But you're welcome to stay. Thank you. Anybody have anything that's on or off the agenda that they want to speak to at this time, please come forward. Give us your name. If it's for the public hearings, I prefer if you would please wait till the public hearings so it's more consistent with what's going on. Anybody have anything else that they want to speak to other than that might be on the agenda? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then. Communications, missing in this business, we have none. Unfinished business, none. New business items will be discussion and potential action. Item 7A, a public hearing. Discuss and consider recommendation to village board for a general development plan, GDP, at 5221 and 5227 County Highway CC. Applicant is Regency Property Management. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Staff report.
All right, I'll take it away and then invite our developer to come up and add some thoughts here. So the Regency property, we've obviously been talking about for many months now, lots of different iterations. The plan before you tonight looks very similar to the concept plan that was presented, I believe, at the November Planning Commission meeting. Main changes were just some reorientation of property lines, so that both, there'll be two lots is what's being proposed, but they would both have the required street frontage on Highway CC. And there was some rearrangement of some drive aisles, things like that, to meet fire department requirements. So we have engaged the fire department very early on in the process, and he's comfortable with where things are headed right now. There's also a phasing plan we can kind of scroll through that has a couple of different colors on it. That's one thing we asked them to provide, just to be able to see. It's still a 200-unit development, just given some of the fire code requirements and the ability to only have one entrance here on CC, kind of per the county highway department's recommendations. But, so sitting at 200 units, the building's range, I think it's between 49 units to 57 units each for a total of 200, and then you can see there's buildings, kind of, one is the L-shaped building that moves sort of kind of clockwise, two, three, and four. And there's a phasing plan later on, the plans that just shows the build-out area for each of those phases. But again, that's been run by the fire department, and he's comfortable with kind of the condition that things would be in with each phase. So if we're just sitting with building one for a couple of years, it would be able to, you know, kind of function safely. I guess I will invite Jake and his team up if you guys want to add anything. Wanted to make sure. Okay. We can pull up.
Hey, guys. Jake Dome, Regency Property Management.
Matt Tills from Canokee and Bruce Architects.
Good to see you guys again. Happy new year. Thanks for having us back. Missed you in December, but we got everything all wrangled again, so we're here again. I think Elise kind of summed up a lot of the major concerns. I guess just to reiterate a little bit, some of the changes that we had made was, made some of the drive aisles kind of shifted away from the pedestrian trail there. We also kind of moved building C a little bit, because one of the concerns that we had last time was light pollution coming in from incoming traffic. So we moved that building forward a little bit so that we could provide better landscape screening in there. I think that that will hopefully suffice, you know, because we can't really move the actual entrances into the buildings there. As far as the fire department, I think that was kind of the main concerns. Like Elise had said, we added the fire hydrants, changed the hose lengths. We got it down to 200 units so that we could meet those fire codes with the entry points. We have the 26-foot drive aisles at two hydrants, and then the fire turning lane movements. The other thing that we kind of took into consideration from the past comments was just in terms of the elevations. Redoing the elevations a little bit from the exterior, adding a little bit more stone, and just kind of relooking the work to the building. And we kind of came up with something that we think looks really nice. Hopefully, you guys do too. It looks very similar to what else is kind of going on in the neighborhood in terms of colors, with the pitched roofs, the look of the building, with just a little bit more modern touch to it, I would say. So, as far as anything else goes, if you wanted to add anything else?
I don't know if I've got any other sort of, I'm certainly available to answer specific questions.
Sure.
Us are too, but, you know, I think that'd probably be a better use of the time here.
Okay, any quick questions from the commission?
I have one. I believe John brought it up in the last meeting, and that was your drive out, so your exit out to have a dedicated left turn, dedicated right turn. I don't see that incorporated. Was that, were you not able to do that?
So it is incorporated. What it is, is there's acceleration and deceleration lanes exemplified there. We've been in communication with Dane County Highway, and as those conversations go on, it, the feedback we're getting from them is that's gonna be the best plan for the property, is to have those acceleration and deceleration lanes. Kind of similar to, like you see going across the street on the other side.
I'm confused by that, because what I'm concerned about is stacking of cars, and so what I see is a single lane exiting.
Oh, you just mean the one coming out of there?
Correct.
So like Ryan kind of touched on last time, if we are to widen that, that's gonna make the drives going into the buildings a lot steeper, and that's gonna be too steep for those cars to go in and out of the buildings. So I know that seems like it would be, you know, somewhat of a concern, and maybe at times it might get some, I don't see it getting that congested. Even though it's 200 apartments, the traffic going in and out of apartment communities is very small. You know, you might have two cars at the same time leaving, even during busy hours.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd echo what Patrick said, and I disagree with your assumption on only a few cars coming out at the same time. I've done enough of this sort of work where, and it doesn't have anything to do with grades, to your engineer's point. That extra right turn lane, only if you were to do it past the drive aisle access to the underground parking, your grades don't change. It's just another lane that has to be incorporated. I do like the, I do like the acceleration and deceleration that makes sense, but I don't think that asking for another right turn-only lane past the drive aisle access is too much, and it would help one curb cut with 200 units, just traffic flow coming out of it. You're not gonna do anything about the in, but you can help with the out.
Okay.
Yeah, I would ask, do you have to have the separation between the pedestrian access, that little green space, or could you have that sidewalk right up as a curb and gain that, that footage that you'd probably need?
Yeah, you could probably do that.
I mean, it's not ideal, but I'd rather see two lanes going out.
Sure.
I think that, conceptually, I think your project is good.
Yeah.
I think that you oriented the buildings in the right way, using the pond as an amenity for people, putting the green space adjacent to the condominiums to the east, minimizing that big building aspect of it. I know that one thing that we'd asked you to in one of your previous iterations was to do a section through the site through there. I think that would just still be a nice practice to do for when you come in for the SIP, to see how that works.
Okay.
Because we're talking about a roof line at the ridge, it's probably another 10, 12 feet higher than what your, what your towers were-ish, I'm guessing. It's enough, and it'd be just nice to see how that relates to the buildings.
Okay, sure.
Two other points slash, I guess, a question for you guys. So another change, I'm not sure if you mentioned, but just there were some changes in the amenities that were shown. I think the concept plan last time had some sport courts, maybe some pickleball. We had a neighborhood meeting, got some feedback on that. So I know there was kind of a, some adjustments there, so just simplified there, I think, right now with the pool, and then some open green space, and then kind of shifted the clubhouse function to more inside that first building, correct? Some more of the community room, gym spaces in there rather than in a dedicated clubhouse.
Correct.
Yeah. The other, I guess, question for you about the entrances, do you feel like, obviously, we'll still have the SIP, the site plan, coming up at a later meeting? Do you feel like you would be able to take a look at implementing that turn lane without making any changes to the, I don't think we had any, like, building setback flexibilities for building one, but do you feel like that would change anything in relation to, it'd be a little bit more pavement, but overall, not a huge change, but do you feel like building shift might need to happen? If you accommodate that?
I guess I don't really want to answer that. That would be a better question for my engineer, so he would probably have to take a look at that and kind of see. I know he heard, you know, the comment last time too, so I'd have to talk and see if we could do it, but if we can, you know, it's like you said, it would just add a little bit more pavement. Probably would be feasible, I would think.
One question for staff, if I could. Maybe it's for staff, maybe it's for you. There was some talk about pedestrian and bike access through the public, quasi-public land area. Is that gone anywhere, or?
Yep, so I think it's a little hard to see here on the map, but it's kind of right along that property line, so you remember, because this property would still need to be annexed, there's a 15-foot difference between the current property line and where there'll have to be a CSM, obviously, to kind of subdivide these properties, but there'll also be a dedication of that front 15 feet of right-of-way. So looks like just grade-wise, they'll be able to accommodate that path right along the new northern property line.
Northern, or southern right-of-way.
Yep.
All right.
I just have a quick comment on, on the entrance. We did the same thing for Jefferson Crossing. I know that was the same kind of concern, where we had two, wanting a right in and a right out and a left out dedicated. And just from an engineering standpoint, it shouldn't cause any kind of major grief. I mean, it's just a little lot, little width, little wider, but even down there, that did turn out terribly wide, if you've been through it, and it's worked really well, so.
Okay.
I can't imagine, looking at what you have for green space out there, I can't imagine that being, you know, a major challenge that, you know, you can't overcome.
Okay.
Greg, I have one more.
Yep.
With respect to the amenities, is there no provision for grilling?
No, we'll have a space for grilling there too. The area there that's dedicated for the amenity is just kind of just showing that, but we will be able to have even like an outbuilding there too, for like kind of a pool house, you know, furniture storage in the winter, that kind of stuff, and then an area for grilling too.
On the SIP, when you come back, you can show those. Grilling was a concern for me.
Yeah.
Our fire ordinance doesn't allow any grilling on balconies of these buildings.
Right, so it's good to have one.
Provide something.
Yeah, 100%. Yeah, yeah, it's, and that gets used too. That's probably the most used amenity in all our other communities, so it's gonna be an important one.
All right. All right, well, invite any public input. Anybody wants to speak to this? Yeah, did you have any, any?
It was all for North Point.
All for North Point, okay. So I thought. So anybody, anybody in the public at all wants to speak to this, this particular public hearing regarding?
I know, hey, this is not, some of the thinking here for, but have you ever seen all the suns and ruins in here?
I'm sorry, we've got, what we gotta do?
Yeah, you'll have to.
Just pull out the correct ways. I have to have you come forward. Yeah, you fellas, go back and take a seat. You have to come forward, sir, and give us your name and your address. That's the procedure. Thank you.
I actually came for another hearing, but I think I have a good idea, and how they can do a grilling thing, like the suns and ruins, they have like a fireplace, and they have a grill hanger, but they have a roof that starts at 10 feet and goes up pointed up to 15 feet with no webs, so the smoke can get out, and that way they could be doing their charcoal grilling, whether it was raining or not. That's my only observation.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for tolerating me for this short time.
Thank you for your input. Okay, no other public input? All right. Plant commission, any other comments? Okay, at this time, we'll close a public hearing and move on to discussion. We've looked at this thing a number of times. They come back and they've done essentially everything we've asked. There will be a couple of things that they will look at for the SIP and for the site plan the next time they come back. At this point, and I, I think I've talked for the rest of the people here, maybe, I shouldn't say it that way. I think the rest of the people will feel the same way, not you folks. It looks like a good project. They've come through, they've done what we've asked, so I think we need to move forward at least with the GDP. You know, motion?
I'm comfortable with that. I'll make that motion.
Okay. That motion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that with the recommendations from the village planner and the annexation agreement and ordinance being put in place.
Accepted.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which is a public hearing to discuss and consider recommendations to the village board for a general development plan, GDP, 249, 267 North Main Street. The applicant is North Point Development. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Okay, Elise, you're on next.
All right, and Jeff, if you can pull up that other, those elevations when Sean comes up, we'll hand that over. So just as background, while Sean's getting settled there, this is the property the village currently owns at 249, 267 North Main Street. Back in the summer, the village board reviewed the RFPs that were submitted and selected North Point's for a 24-unit workforce housing townhome development with a community park on the southern section of that lot, so we have worked with our attorneys, just last, last month, that the village board signed a purchase and sale agreement with North Point. So that would, at the end of this year, once some financing is in place for North Point, grant applications come up in the cycle, then the closing would take place, so looks like approximately two acres would be sold to North Point for their development, and the remaining three-quarter acre, give or take, would remain under village ownership to be used as a community park, and then we'll go through kind of our typical park improvement process for whatever may end up going there, so you all saw a concept plan, I think, again, that was probably November or so, so I know Sean took some of the feedback from that about breaking up the, the massing of that longer run of townhomes there, and not too many other changes, but Sean, I'll kind of hand it over to you, and then we can pull up the elevations as well to talk through.
Yeah, and, you know, thank you again for your time, Sean O'Brien, with North Point Development. In terms of site plan, you know, we're, we're pretty much back with what we had come through on the concept plan a few months ago, breaking up the buildings, 24 units in total, six along Main Street, four in the middle, and then a longer building in the back. And again, the reason for kind of going from four buildings originally on our, our, our plan to the village board to three was to allow some more relief of, you know, the two, you know, very, you know, large and historic trees that are on the site. So we, we shrunk up the middle building and then had to, you know, make the back building a little bit longer to fit everything onto the site. At our last meeting, you had asked for us to pay close attention to, you know, how do the porches look along Main Street, and so I'd really like to get your feedback. We got these about, about five or six hours ago. I was looking at the renderings, so they're not perfect. My, my wife, who does all of our design, isn't in love with the colors yet, so we're gonna be, you know, working on that as well when we come back for the SIP, but, you know, I think it's a good start in terms of, you know, what it could like, look like, and would certainly appreciate your feedback. And then we also have some renderings of how that back building will be stepped up, a couple of different shots. That one, I didn't love, so we, I asked for one more. The next one's a little bit better to give you kind of a, a look of how the roof line would step up, and, you know, would be looking for your feedback on that as well. For some reason, this back building has red doors, and the ones on the other two buildings have white. I don't know if you would have noticed that or not, but, you know, we certainly, yeah, we're certainly gonna make sure that we address that and, you know, make sure that we like the color schemes on, you know, all the, all the three buildings.
All right. Anybody have any quick questions?
Oh, wait.
Wait, wait. Okay, we're gonna open up to the public, because I think we have a few people here that might want to speak. First time you have some people there?
Yes, the first person would be Mike Wunsch.
Mike Wunsch.
Hello. Mike Wunsch, I live at 299 North Main Street. In general, I support the, the project that, that North Point's proposed for here. I think it's, it's a reasonable use of, of that land, especially given the fact it's not gonna be a park. But I have two concerns. One is the open water retention pond along Johnson Street. My understanding from when talking with the library owner representative when this was proposed for a library was that having open water retention in that area would be very difficult, given the fact that groundwater is only a couple of feet below the surface, and just questioning how effective that will be in that area. The other is concern that I have is the reduction of setbacks, particularly the setbacks along Market Street, where the lot lines or the lots of those homes are much smaller than along the lots along Main Street. And also the, the lot line, particularly near the house on the north side of the lot along Main Street. That house currently, I don't know how it got built this way, but currently sits back two feet from the lot line. So with a 10-foot setback, you are looking at 12 feet from a dining room window. I can't imagine that that will be, that those reduced lot lines, particularly in those areas, will, will have a positive effect on anyone's home values. So I'd like you to consider working something else out, even if it involves reducing the size of the units by, or the property from 24 to 22 units or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent Teskey?
Hi, I'm Brent Teskey. I live at 126 Johnson Street. We're by the north entrance area on this site. Excuse me. I wanted to voice support for the project.
Just hold the microphone real close.
Sure, I wanted to voice some support for the project, I think in general, with the notes that Mike just gave about property setbacks. This looks great. Tells me a few things about this site here. Number one, we're inviting 24 new families to come join our neighborhood. That's great. We're gonna have a more vibrant, engaging, interesting group of neighbors to work with, to get to know. Good chance they're gonna have kids. I've got kids myself. I would love it if they had some good friends who live just up the hill from us, be able to play, explore the community, get to know each other, and grow up here. Second, tells me that we're paying attention to what the sustainability committee recommended. Infill housing is one of the best tools we have against climate change, and that's exactly what this is. We're putting 24 homes in an area that is a quarter mile from all the restaurants and shops downtown. It's within a mile of grocery, hardware store, pharmacies, all kinds of stuff on the north end of town, and it is literally across the street from two elementary schools. This gets people's options, so they don't have to get in a car to go everywhere, and it's, again, adding more neighbors to our community. And third, it tells me that we're looking at the financial realities of single-family development. If we were to build these 24 homes as single-family houses somewhere in a greenfield site, that adds a lot of infrastructure liability that the village carries in perpetuity. Comes out to probably half-mile, give or take, of streets, water lines, sewer lines, all of that, that we have to then pave to maintain. Instead, putting it here puts it in a position where we have feet of additional infrastructure reliability. I think we're all here, you guys, as well as the people behind me, because we all like living in Oregon and we love this community. I'm very excited to be able to reach out to 24 new families and say, come join us and see why we love it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sebi Bloom?
Hello.
Hi there.
Thank you for this opportunity to ask you questions. Is it true that you sold the property for one?
Is it true that you sold the property for one dollar?
I don't have that information personally.
One dollar for that whole property? Okay.
I'm sorry, we do have to have your, you have, I'm sorry, she said your name, but you have to give us your name and your address. I shouldn't say you have to. We request you to.
Okay, and then what was the property tax level for the Methodist church?
Sorry, say again?
What was the property tax per year on the Methodist church when it was there?
Churches don't pay taxes. Churches do not pay any taxes.
Right, okay.
So now there will be a tax.
And then are these town homes all being sold or are they rented?
They would be rentals.
Yeah.
It would be rentals?
Yes.
So where, who gets, who has charged the property tax?
The owner of the property.
At what rate?
Whatever the rate is that we have.
Full market value.
Full market value, yeah.
Full value. Okay, but are you aware of the fact that, at least in the past, do you understand how many different rates the Village of Oregon charges property tax?
I'm not sure I follow that.
The, all, all property texts are set by the assessor.
Yeah.
And so the village plan commission, the village staff, we really have nothing to do with the assessors. In fact, that's why they keep it totally separate.
Because what I understood, and this is probably, could be old information, a thousand two hundred and seventy-three square feet is charged at ninety-one, ninety-five dollars per square foot in, in the village. But if you're over that, at say, two thousand two hundred and eighteen square feet, you're only charged sixty-three dollars per square foot.
I'm not quite sure where you're getting your numbers from, but again, it, it has to do with the value of your property as the assessor states it. So whatever your property is evaluated at, and the mill rate for the village, that's how it's taxed.
By square foot?
Not by square foot.
Not by square foot anymore?
No, not at all. Has nothing to do with square foot. Has to do with the value of the property.
Okay, so that is not correct information anymore?
No, it's not.
Okay, that's changed. Okay. And then, so how much square footage is taxed? At what rate? You won't know.
Again, there's, it has nothing to do with square footage.
No, I know, but well, at what rate is this, well, who's evaluating it? Assessor will evaluate?
I'll let, I'll let Jeff go ahead.
Yeah, so, so this would be, these would be questions for the assessor.
Yes.
And they won't determine the assessed value until they are built. And that's when the assessor will either visit the site, more than likely, and assess them based on their calculated value of that. Or they will use their formulas that they use for, based on type of construction, amenities, finished spaces, all of that type of thing, which go into the assessed value. But again, that's, has nothing to do with plan commission or even staff or, or administration at all.
Okay, so really, you're not sure what property tax would be generated off of this project?
Not this time. I guess that's not.
But it was, the church had no property tax value?
No, they did not. No, they did not.
Okay, so is there really any benefit when you look at fourteen units in that little space, looking at the narrow, I don't know if you call it green space or whatever? And none of the pictures really showed where the former properties are relative to the new, what, ten-foot space?
Well, they're showing the limitations or the, the area of their property. It's shown there. The outbound, or the out area of the property, they're showing it right there. The, or the properties are adjacent. They don't give dimensions, but they're showing there.
Right, but again, those smaller properties are gonna have this huge building right next up to them.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
And you think really that space can handle fourteen different units with parking?
According to our, yes, it can.
Twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yep, so twenty-four, twenty-four units in total in development. There's a, there's a line.
On the Main Street, I'm not questioning necessarily, other than moving that property line. I feel bad for the house that has only ten feet there with those buildings when it's on the south side.
Well, our, our side yard setback is ten feet, the Village of Oregon. That's what it is. Unless you go to some.
And then how, that's two stories, right next to that house?
Doesn't matter how stories.
Okay. And then has ever an air quality test been done from Main Street traffic affecting Main Street properties? No air quality has ever been with all the traffic?
I don't know what the purpose would be for that, but.
Well, I'm thinking people are gonna run their cars in the winter and you've got, you know, fumes in the back. And then you've got fumes from the cars on Main Street.
Yes, we do, but I, I would think that the number of vehicles on Main Street far exceeds the number of vehicles that'd be associated with this property.
You know, it's also a dip in the, in the.
I understand that.
Property that might hold it in. Well, I was just wondering, how does a citizen request air quality tests?
Go to a village hall and ask, I guess.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not sure where you're going with this, because that's not a normal request.
I don't know how we would. I mean, we've done, the only time we've ever done air quality tests were for mold testing in a facility. And we ended up finding the mold in the facility was much, much less than what was outside. So, but as far as, I can't imagine where we'd even begin with that. And I, and honestly, it would not be warranted.
I've never really heard of that, kind of a.
I'm just asking these questions.
That's fine.
That's our house right there.
That's why we have a public hearing.
Then the other thing is, do you have an arborist hired or know of one that will make sure those trees are protected? Because oak trees do not like their roots disturbed. And I was, I know Milwaukee just has an urban tree arborist program through their technical school. And they just featured it on TV, where they are actually hiring arborists to protect their city trees.
I think that, I, I believe that when we started looking this, with this with North Point, I believe that the comment was to try and maintain and protect the, the existing older oak trees that are on that property.
Do you have an arborist that will?
I don't know if we have an arborist. They'll have somebody to take a look at. I'm very familiar with what you're talking about. If you work outside the drip edge, I think you're okay. All right?
Well, I guess I'd like to know a professional opinion on what they plan to do with the, with the cement and buildings.
I guess you can, you can ask the developer when he gets ready to develop this if they would do that. I don't think the village has a requirement to do that.
So you're not planning on an arborist being involved at all?
No, at this point in time, I don't see how we can demand that, no.
I think it'd be a wise idea to have an arborist if you're gonna save those trees.
We understand. I mean, there's been a lot of concern over, over these trees. And the developer has gone to great lengths to work their, re, rework their design to avoid these trees. And, you know, they understand the importance of their, it's a beautiful tree. I mean, and it's unfortunately right smack dab in the middle of everything, but they've done a lot to avoid this. And, and yeah, there'll be a lot of eyes and neighbors and everyone, we're all watching it to make sure that it is protected.
There's a procedure to protect a tree. Does anybody here know what that is?
I'm not a professional arborist, but I've been enough construction sites. I've seen it, yes. I, I, I'm very familiar with some of the things that are done.
Well.
And I'm sure that the contractor will pay attention to that, and there'll be some requirements. And I'm sure like Jeff has said, there's gonna be a lot of eyes. There's a lot of eyes out here in this audience. Everybody's gonna be watching.
Needs to be a professional opinion that they're doing it correctly, though, I think. The other thing is, have you, have they looked into the water main? Is that ready to take on this number of, of homes? It's already in?
Yes. Yes.
Installed and ready to go? Okay, and then will we experience any decrease in water pressure with all the other?
No.
Nothing, okay. Yes. I think that's pretty much what I wanted to find out for now. So is, is this a done deal, actually? Is this?
This is, this is, this is the GDP, the general development part of it. There's something called an SIP. There is a site plan. There's a lot of other things to be going on yet. You certainly come back and watch during the, the process.
And is there any deadline for doing some of the, or starting construction or having a date and projected dates?
No, it depends on the developer. I, I don't know if we have.
I'll just, yeah, so the, the village board, again, in December, about a month ago, approved basically an offer, a purchase and sale agreement that says we'll close by the end of twenty twenty-four, based on some financing deadlines that the, the developer has to meet. And then they are required to start construction within a year, so that is defined in the agreement. But it's, you know, pouring foundations and other things that are more permanent structures, so that we have a guarantee that the project will actually happen within a timely manner. So if that doesn't happen within a year, the construction started, then the village has a right to take, take the property back and, and, you know, not go through that.
So it's end of twenty twenty-four is really when you're?
That would be the closing.
Could be the closing.
Yep, so likely construction probably starting in, yeah, spring, winter, spring of twenty-five. So it'd be about a year from now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Justine and Jacob, do you guys want to come up at the same time or something?
My name is Justine Bondi. I'm at two four six Market Street. So I'm kind of on the south end of the fourteen-unit building. And I'm really concerned about the ten-foot setback from the building, especially on that end, on the south end of the fourteen-unit building. Market Street does stay, doesn't, doesn't go uphill like that lot does. So as that building gets step ups, it's getting higher and higher and higher. Like, it's going to feel like it's, you know, on top of us, like anybody on that side of the fourteen-unit building. The ten-foot setback also, I mean, there's a lot of mature trees along that property line, too. We have some maple trees, some nice looking, some more nice-looking oak trees and a few whatever walnut trees. But with a ten-foot setback, that canopy and the roots of those trees, I mean, everything's gonna be gone. And that would, with it, take any privacy, you know, woodland critters or whatever. But it's just, it's gonna have a pretty big effect on the, the landscape of the lot even. And just having everything so close. I thought with this code that it was like the back of a residential lot was twenty feet. Isn't this an exemption?
Yep, so this is the planned development zoning process, so they have the ability to request exemptions from the zoning code. And it's reviewed kind of on a case-by-case basis.
But you are correct, as the code says that, but in this process, they're requesting a variance from that, or a change from that.
I, I am pretty opposed to that, even on the north side of the other property there on Main Street. I mean, that's really tight on these, on our, you know, on the neighborhood. I would think that the people living in those town homes, too, would, would want something else to look at aside from the giant, you know, feed mill building. You know, why would they want that ten feet from their back door, back window also? You know, I think having a little more green space, having a little more space around the neighborhood and on the, the property itself would be very beneficial. And just even keeping with the, you know, the normal, the feel of the neighborhood right now, it just seems very, like, like it's cramming a lot of housing on a lot that might be a little small for it.
That's it? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Scott, two four six Market Street. I'm, just like to voice my opposition to the setback also, same reasons. We have a, it is a beautiful lot. It's, it's gonna get, be, this development is a great plan. It's just, it seems like it is gonna be right on top of us the entire time. I, I feel like it's really encroaching a lot on each other's space, especially with the, the density with wildlife in the back there. So that's my only opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Rachel and Samuel.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lavender. This is my husband, Sam Eater. And we just bought one three five Johnson Street. We're first-time home buyers and we're really excited to be living in Oregon. This was, you know, a dream that we've been working for, towards for a really long time, to buying our first home. And one of the reasons we chose Johnson Street, the, the property that we bought, was because of how beautiful and quiet the neighborhood is. And we are a bit concerned about the setback variances and the house, the housing unit density variances. Every morning during the fall, when we went outside, there would be sandhill cranes in the property right there. And there's just so much wildlife there. We're, I'm, I'm concerned about how many units are going to be going in. We are excited to welcome new neighbors and want to, you know, be kind and courteous and welcoming. But I am concerned about how many units and how little green space will be there. Also, a little bit concerned about the stormwater drain, like what that's gonna look like, since that, our house is directly across the street from that. So just wanting to know more about that.
Nope, I think that covers our concerns. Yeah, concern about the, the stormwater pool, if that is at all a flood risk for the houses nearby.
I'll make a quick comment. It shouldn't be, because it's designed by the engineers to accommodate that, so that's the purpose for it. So we should, you know, shouldn't be any issues or concerns for you.
It'll likely be a combination part, it depends if they can, but a part infiltration basin, part wet basin. It may all be just a part infiltration, or all infiltration basin. And then there is a direct connection to a storm sewer right on that corner. And that, that connection will be made. It goes straight out to Market Street and then straight south all the way down to the creek. And that's very new stuff within the last ten, twelve, fourteen years. Was sized to be able to kind of handle some of the problems that had been experienced at this property and in the neighborhood there.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Stark Traxler.
I'm Stark Traxler. I live at two seven seven North Main, which is the property right next to, what would that be, two sixty-nine? I'm all for this project. It looks like it's well thought out. The only problem is, is the, I would like to see us keep the twenty-foot setbacks. Obviously, my house is only gonna be twelve feet away. And I guess if I wanted to live in Madison and have a wall to stare at, I guess I'd be living there. But those are the only concerns that I have. You know, so, I mean, it looks like it's thought out. And of course, you know, with the ten-foot setback, you know, obviously the snow storage is gonna be pushed right against my driveway and my chain link fence that I have for my backyard. So those are the only concerns that I have. I think I agree with, you know, my neighbors so far on the project. You know, that I think it's a good thing that we can get this to move forward and get some, welcome to some new neighbors in. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
I heard everything else.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Kay Rita.
Hello, thank you for the time. My name is Kay Rita Funk and I live at three oh four North Main Street. And I have a question and I have a concern. My concern, as has been voiced by other people, is the setback next to Stark's home. I'm just, when I look at where they've marked lot lines and stuff, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of room in there. And I would just ask that you do a elevation illustration to actually get a really good idea of what that would look like before you make a final decision. My question regarding the water retention for runoff is, is that going to be fenced in any way? If there are going to be more kids in the neighborhood, how deep? Is that, I haven't seen an elevation on that, so I'm just curious.
We tend not. Those are typically dot fenced.
Okay.
The days of wet ponds, deeper wet ponds have kind of passed and they're going in more a favor of infiltration type with engineered soil. Kind of a combination rain garden type of infiltration basin.
Okay, so you're not anticipating standing water there that would be a hazard?
I don't know yet. It would really.
Well, you never know.
Well, no, I mean, but I, I, we've not seen the design of that, you know, and, but that will go through. It, it has to meet, excuse me, it has to meet very strict requirements both for people. It, it has to meet, excuse me, it has to meet very strict requirements, both for peak, peak flow reduction, infiltration. Um and, and obviously they have to have the capacity in there to be able to store if we get the, the big.
Right.
The big storms, which we don't happen in this area, so. Uh but it does get, I will say this, is we, we scrutinize the storm water plans extremely closely. Because um this is an area where I've been out there in the middle of the night.
Yep.
With neighbors.
Putting some pumps together.
And, and um you know, it's helpless when, when the water's coming in. And so, you know, we really do wanna see this as a solution versus just a continuation of a problem.
Great, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
And then one more, Tommy Bjarnson.
My name is Tom.
Yep, you're up.
I'm getting more acquainted with my neighbors than I have been in a long time. Got neighbors work, um my thing that I, I've spent my whole life living in the same house. My parents moved in in July of fifty eight. So the other woman by the name of Lavender, she was like in the old Paul Brown house. And she's right, when you look across the street, you see, you see sandhill cranes and stuff. And sometimes, not too often deer, and the rarest thing to ever see in our neighborhood are wood ducks. I saw that happen once. But uh I'm thinking that all the flooding problem can be resolved is by taking a bunch of leaves and running them over with a lawnmower and then road to towing them in. Lots of times, I've been doing this with my garden for quite a few years. They condense down to about one fifth of whatever amounts you put in there. You do it a lot of times and rather than having a puddle or sinking thing, they fill up like sponges. And then slowly let the water out. It makes for a softer ground, so you don't have like a hard ground when you're gonna, when you're gonna push, you know, and stuff. So for gardening and putting in a fence bolt or whatever, easier. My thing, I'm against having people live over there because every time something happens, it blows up in my face. And I've had three houses coming around me in my lifetime. Starting with the one on Market Street. And then another one, although I like the neighbor, no, I didn't always like the neighbor on the corner of Market Johnson. And then the other one, three twenty six Market Street, that's like. On the west side of my property, there are three houses. And this would be like the one further into the north, where I actually wound up having to put up a, a fence. I'd like to have a changed ordinance about fencing. They say a six foot fence is okay. Well, I wanna have a nine foot fence because the guy has raised his backyard about two or three feet. So I wanna have an exemption where I could have a nine foot fence because he's got like security cameras and everything. And I don't like the idea of always being watched. And I do feel threatened by two neighbors, the one to the north and the one to the west of me. So everything that happens blows up in my face, I hope it's nice people that move in, when they move in. I would prefer to have garages and storage areas there in green space. I've seen that land that you're talking about done for a lot of spreading good things like tobogganing. And went back when the Methodist church was brand new, which was about nineteen seventy two, the Sunday School building. After they ran it over that with the cars and it would pack the snow, really great for going with the, with the sleds with rails. I even sprained my shoulder grabbing onto the grass, going down on skis, I've seen football down there, kite flying, baseball playing. And oh, what nobody knows now is until about nineteen seventy two, right across from Johnson Street, the big open area. That was the woods and where the neighbor is, the one single neighbor in the corner, that was grassy field. I even remember that on fire one time. And the fire department coming, you know, so I'm hoping that you get trees to keep the place cool. One last thing before I go and quit it. I came outside on the way here and I could hear an owl in a, in an oak tree. And I expected to see deer because I know when I hear owls, you wind up seeing deer on these back roads or out in the country. So just keep in mind that I just don't wanna have any problems. I don't want too many people in a too small an area.
I hope they all have friendly neighbors to you.
I hope that they're all friendly neighbors too, but everything that's happened seems to blow up in my face.
Let's hope it doesn't.
I hope it works good.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
But you think that the, the idea of getting rid of the dampness is a possibility to.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
To consider, you know, leaves, sawn us, just road to towing in.
That'll be thought about, thank you very much for your time, you bet. Nothing else, anybody else who wants to speak to the uh, to the public hearing? Yes, one at a time, but come on up and give us your name and.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Alice Farrell, I live on the corner of Market and Johnson Street, right, right on the lot line. And that, and I guess my biggest concern is the water issue and that we've had flooding. I had to say it, the last couple of years I've, I don't care if it never rains. I'm sorry, I didn't. And that, even though it was a bad drought, but I, you know, I'm concerned about this pond, I guess is what you're gonna call it, I don't know.
It's an engineered structure that's utilized to control the water runoff on a property. And it will be engineered and it will be, this gives us an opportunity right now to do it right.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, well, I know that there's a lot of clay in that land.
But again.
On my land too.
I know, but that all is part of the engineering, they'll be done to take care of it.
Yeah, and that stuff, so that's one of my biggest concerns there, and the ground table gets full.
Sure.
And then pretty soon it's in my basement, so.
We don't want that.
No, we don't want that.
Okay.
No, doesn't make me happy.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Get another person back, yes, come on up.
Hello, my name's Marilyn Allen, I'm from two nine five North Main Street. And two things that I have questions and concerns, um a traffic study to be done there. And the in and out, because with the school right there, there's a whole lot of traffic all the time. And I just wanna make sure that at least somebody's doing that sort of thing. Because I'm very concerned, I can't even get out of my driveway sometimes in the mornings or in the late afternoon because of the amount of traffic. And with adding twenty four more units, I think that special attention should be, should be paid to the in and the out. Um because I think it would be a big problem if you try to, is that if the park is gonna be, there won't be an entrance on North Main? I guess is my question.
There's, there's curb cuts there, yeah, there's, there's curb cuts, sure.
Yep, there's entrance both on North Main Street and on Jefferson, uh Johnson, sorry.
So there's, there's, there's entrance in both directions.
Okay, well, um I would just like to see a traffic study done and, and make sure that it's all safe and copacetic. Because it's real hard to get up and down Main Street. I mean, if you're an Oregon resident, you already know that, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, come in. Anybody else? Got your chance? Plan Commission, any more comments? Quiet, nothing, huh? We gotta close the public hearing.
Oh, hang on.
Oh. You gotta speak.
Well, I have some questions for the developer, but uh I need a second here. We have the developer come back up.
Yeah, uh North Point, come back up here please.
Greg, did you close the public hearing?
I guess I didn't.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I will apologize to the audience and everybody else, but yes. You, you didn't have to have your name, but yes, certainly, come on up. Uh I hope this does not screw things up.
No, I don't think you officially closed it, you just talked about it, so.
I apologize, my name's Leif Olson, two seventy six North Main Street.
Thank you.
My only question is, is who will ultimately end up owning the green space? Will it be the development company or still the village?
The park space would be owned in perpetuity by the village.
Right.
Appreciate it.
That was easy, huh? Thank you. Okay, now I'm sorry, North Point, come back, uh nobody else, right, nobody else wanna speak, questions, alright? Yes, go ahead, please.
Um so I understand they're all rentals, that was brought up in the discussion, what is the approximate rent for these units?
It will range, um the units will be set aside for households that earn between thirty percent and eighty percent of the county median income. And so that ranges on the top end, a family of four at the eighty percent level is about ninety to a hundred thousand. Um in Dane County and on the thirty percent range, I, I don't know if it's, you know, forty thousand, something along those lines for a family of four.
And that'll be an annual lease agreement?
They, yes, so we worked through the, the tax credit program, they require annual leases.
And then if their income goes up during that time, then they're not able to renew the lease, is that?
That's not the case, um so if they qualify for the household initially and their income increases, they're allowed to maintain in their, their home, they don't get kicked out.
Into perpetuity.
Correct.
Okay, um are there restrictions on outdoor storage as part of the lease?
That, you know, in the house rules, they're, you know, they're not allowed to um, you know, put up any structures or, or store things outside and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned about the aesthetics of playthings being left out, toys, uh other stuff being left out. Are there restrictions within that, within your lease agreement?
I would say probably, I mean, our other townhomes, if you drive by them, you're, you may see a bicycle out there. You may see, you know, someone who has a grill um on their, their back patio. Um or, you know, may, maybe some kid, kid toys, but for the most part, people, you know, keep their belongings. And what's nice about the design here is that they all have single car garages. Um and then we'll have another um, you know, property in the village um with onsite management. So we'll have, you know, you know, people that will be able to maintain drive bys and, and property aesthetics and that sort of thing. And so, you know, if there are issues, the, the tenants do get notices of lease violations. But uh for the most part, people will put out like flowers, um you know, other things that, you know, bring up the, the neighborhood versus, you know, if, if there is something like if someone's leaving trash. Um or other issues like that, that gets addressed by the, by the property manager.
Okay, I think I asked this uh in a previous meeting, but do these units have basements?
They do not.
Okay. Uh is there, there's been concern raised about the ten foot setback. I, I understand that concern, especially on the western side. Is there any planned treatment, fencing, replanting trees that might be lost?
Um the western side, so.
So the far west, so that'd be your Market Street side.
I, I think we could, um I think we could put a, a six foot tall fence along that property line, that wouldn't be an issue.
And those units have a, a back patio or something?
Yes, they would have a patio.
Um.
Looks like some landscaping.
It appeared to me that the, the patios are back, are on the ten foot offset, the building is probably another almost ten feet more than that. So the buildings and foundations might be eighteen or twenty feet from the property line.
Right, yeah, the patio goes to the ten foot setback and the building is probably another seven to eight feet.
There's more space than is perceived, I think.
Right.
This, this distance right here is a ten feet, you can see it's same from here to here.
That must be at least eight feet or.
End of that.
Yeah.
Which we do have ten foot side yard setbacks for our, you know, single family homes, duplexes and other areas.
On that western building, I don't see the letter or marking of it, the, the northernmost and the southernmost units are bigger.
Those are single story.
Those are single story, okay.
Yep, those will be your um ADA handicap accessible. Um so yeah, as, as it goes up, the last unit, um the fourteen is gonna be single story, so the, the roof line would be lower, as you can see on the left. The far left of that picture, it's a single story unit, the same as this one.
Oh yeah.
And then up there.
And then um with respect to the concern that was raised about the Main Street um side yard setback.
Yeah, if you go to that one, um a couple of things that I, I heard, I mean, we have space to make sure that, that, that building is twenty feet away from the property line. That would not be.
That's what I was gonna ask, can you shift that building to the south?
Right, and then, you know, in terms of snow storage, we can look for a, a separate space to, to handle that area of snow. And we could probably even lose a parking stall, um you know, to bring that back as well. Or we could use those last two parking stalls as the snow storage.
That was my other concern is, you know, we talked about that in the last meeting and we already, you already sacrificed some stalls there. But is that snow gonna get pushed over onto that northern neighbor? So it sounds like you're, you know, aware of that concern.
Right, I think we can, and get rid of where the snow storage is and maybe just dedicate, you know, and, you know, those two stalls to snow storage in the winter.
I was gonna say, we signed, we did that over at Jefferson Cross because we signed a few stalls, simple signage, you know, just during a certain time of the year. Can't park there and, and uh it's worked really well. Same kind of concern with just where, where do you push stuff?
Are you looking at fencing that northern boundary?
Um I guess I would wanna talk to the neighbor uh that does live at that property and see what their thoughts are. I wouldn't be against doing it, but um if we move, if we shift the building over, if they'd like to see a, a six foot tall fence along that property line. Uh you know, to a certain point, if, you know, if they'd like to see it all the way down, um or how, you know, how they'd like us to address that. But I could get their feedback and um, you know, go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
See, I think that a simple answer to um, and maybe there's some agreement in place as to the area that the village is to get for the park. Is there a set um area? I mean, one of my concerns is the dry, the curb cut for the, the school across the street is, is kittywampus to where your curb cut is.
Okay.
If we were to take that curb cut and that fourplex and shift it to the south, even five to ten feet. Which would give an additional space to your neighbor. Um it would minimize the parkland by five to ten feet, but it would straighten out that, that uh cross access to the curb cut. And it would also alleviate some of the concerns that were placed on that side yard to the neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh so it's just something to look at. Um and, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, obviously the park, you know, hasn't been designed, this is gonna kind of be in the scale of more of a, a smaller neighborhood or more of a pocket park. A lot of our neighborhood parks don't have um their own dedicated parking lot, but given that the North Main Street uh doesn't have any on-street parking, you think that's something that we'd wanna look at is maybe having a small parking lot? I know that's something we've talked about with um probably the CSM, when the lot gets divided, there would be an easement there that would allow public access off North Main Street to, if there's in the future some kind of small um parking area or other amenities, that we wanna make sure that the public has access to that, that drive aisle could be used for both purposes.
So another option would be to take that curb cut and push it all the way to the south, so it lines up with the curb cut across the street and put those parking stalls on the north, which would again, line those things up. And then it'd give you the flexibility to shift those buildings to the south a little bit.
Is your concern mostly just about kind of traffic and turning?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of that curb cut, in and out, and it's not just during school, after school uses that, athletics use that. Um yeah, I just, I'm not a fan ever of trying to have curb cuts that aren't in line, it causes problems.
Under original plan uh to the Village Board, we showed um a little parking area there. Um and, you know, we took that off because uh, you know, we're gonna split up the site and only purchase the, the site for the housing. Um I can, I can work with staff and see if there's a solution there. Um because, you know, having a central driveway that accesses a parking area or brings it through the lot. Or having a curb cut that goes through that parking area to the rest of the site, I mean, I'm, I'm indifferent to that, you know, it could work as well.
Yeah, and, and I understand the liability. Yeah, and, and I understand the liability aspect of it too, it puts parking that's public, close to your buildings and all those sorts of things. I just, I voiced my, my concern and I'd like for something to be, tried to be worked out or some agreement reached. Elise, in our zoning code, would this be considered a commercial aspect next to a residential, so there would be a requirement for a fence, whether it's hard or soft?
So it's not considered commercial, it's considered, this be, you know, kind of our MR eight multifamily zoning as the base zoning district here underneath the planned development, so there is that chart in our code for that screening, so that can be a combination of fencing and/or landscaping. But because it is, yes, a more intense use next to a less intense use, the buffer yard kind of density or opacity will be greater than if it was a single-family home next to a single-family home, so.
Screening, I guess, is probably.
Yeah, so that'll be looked at, and, you know, he hasn't requested any, any flexibilities that you'd be unable to meet the screening requirement or the landscaping requirement, so we'll look at that with the SIP.
And it's all stuff that'll be worked out in the next phase, it's just, you know, things that run through my head when I get in the weeds. I think that, that big-picture wise, it's a great project. I think that what we forget about when we look at these sort of infill developments is that there's sacrifices that are gonna have to be made. Whether it be a smaller backyard, whether it be the loss of a few, some trees, whether it be the loss of an amenity that was once a park and used for a lot of people to do whatever in. The upside is, is that we are increasing the density in something that is desperately needed in our community, and that's homes at a price point. And I think that you've done that, and I think that you've struck a nice balance with that while including a small little pocket park. Which is a huge amenity for these people that live here and people that live in that area, so. I don't want you to think that we're, we're just poo-pooing your project, I think it's a good project.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I think it's just the details kind of thing. If you want to get into some of the aesthetic stuff that you had talked about on the, on the beginning, I think that the building that's against the west side is more successful than the building that's against Main Street.
Okay.
I think that probably what's helping you on the building on the west side is the fact that it steps down and your ridge lines break up. I, I think that the building that's against Main Street, it doesn't match sort of the aesthetic of the homes that are adjacent to it. You know, there's sort of a certain rhythm of modules in, in homes of, of that time. And, and it doesn't have to be much, you know, if, if you're doing your condos, or your, I'm sorry, your apartments, townhomes, whatever you want to call them. And they're X feet wide, maybe the next one is X feet wide, but it's a foot back, so that there's a little bit of in and out, so that that rhythm begins to break up in the, in the facade. And then maybe what you do is, is on some of those townhomes that are in the middle, you raise the eve a foot or you lower the eve a foot so that your ridge line breaks up. They're not huge cost, I know you're at a price point, so these aren't things that are gonna break the bank. Going from an eight-foot pre-cut stud to an eight-foot stud is enough to sort of break that ridge line up. The, I think that it's a nice attempt at the porches, and I appreciate what you've done. I think that maybe something that you could do is, for example, the porches that are on the end, maybe make them the gable, so that they have a little bit more height to them. Something like that. Maybe even the, the end units, instead of doing a hip as they fall back, those two become a gable as well.
Okay.
You know, something to just sort of look at how, not just your ridge lines, but your facades play with each other. Cost-wise, it shouldn't make a difference. But your win, windows are good, you've got some variation in them, you've got variation materials. So, there you have it.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else?
Nothing else from the audience?
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to address the, the storm basin. Because I think there's a lot of questions about it, so we'll do a dry infiltration basin, basin, excuse me. And we don't know the, the size yet, that will be calculated as, you know, we move forward. But the idea here is, you know, you take all of the, you know, the rainwater from the, the top of the, the site, which is where the park will be, and as it flows down, and my understanding is it currently causes issues for, you know, some of the households in that area. But all the water kind of will be, you know, funneled to this area will be mostly dry, like a rain garden. There won't be, you know, standing wet water here, except for maybe after a heavy rain, as it sits there until it goes into the storm, storm sewer. So, you know, there is no intent to have, you know, standing water or a pond, it's, it's, it'd be dry. And more of like, you know, like your rain garden with vegetation in it, and, and with that being the low side of the site, you'd probably see that, you know, where, where the topography is now, maybe some buildups around the ridges to kind of hold that, you know, rainwater when we get it, but it's not gonna dig down, in my opinion, into, you know, and you get near to the, the water table, it'll kind of sit where it's at and kind of maybe bring that up a little bit as well. But it will capture all of the, the runoff and, you know, from the park and, and from the site as well, so I think it will be overall a good thing for, you know, for that area.
Excellent, excellent. Well done. I will now close the hearing, okay? Thank you. We'll move on, have some discussion and a possible recommendation. Any more discussion, I think we've talked it pretty well.
I, I have a question for Jeff. I asked you before about Johnson Street, I think you said reconstruction is twenty twenty-six?
Yes, I think that's, I think that is correct.
If this project goes through, according to the schedule, is it possible to have that dovetail with the same construction timeline, so move it up a year?
That's possible, we can look at that, I'd have to talk to Lauren about that. I do know we have one street that is Lincoln Street that is already scheduled as a DOT project, believe it or not, kind of through some grant funding. But we can look at that, you know, we move these around as, as things work. Your concern is like just kind of tearing it all up at once?
Well, I, I think Johnson's gonna be used as a main exit, and so it would be nice to have that ready when tenants are moving in.
Yeah.
Uh, to reduce the load on Main Street.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the thing with like Johnson and some of those other streets, granted, they, you know, they're, they're definitely older streets, some are in a little better or worse shape than others. The, the primary thing along those is the older water mains that we're having upgrades. A lot of those are the old four-inch ductile iron, which is very small for a water main. And so the main project on these would, other than reconstruction of the roads, would be putting in the eight-inch water mains. But the streets are, in my mind, terrible shape, I've been down there quite a bit, maybe is it, I'm seeing a few nods, so I'm not totally off-base yet.
The, the streets aren't bad, the side, the sidewalks are terrible.
Market Street, the sidewalks are terrible, yeah, exactly. And I don't know when, when they redid Market Street, they did, redid Market Street, resurfaced it and did all new utilities up there, but they didn't ever touch the sidewalks. And that was before my time, so we won't heat up any oil tonight for that.
That's good.
Or good. Yeah, that's good, but, yeah, no, I think we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Good. Be ready to move on with the motion?
I, I guess I gotta quit, I'm happy to make a motion, but before I do, Elise, how do we handle some of these concerns with the setback? Primarily the, the northern side of the Main Street building. I'm not too concerned about the backside, because as we've talked about, it's more than what we'd originally thought. But that one is, is tight with the curb cut and everything.
Yeah, certainly tight, again, it's consistent with other single-family side yard setbacks, I mean, if, if a we decided to sell this to a developer and do single-family homes, they could build a ten-foot setback by right. But I think, you know, Sean's offered to work with the neighbor and discuss, you know, if fencing would be appropriate and/or obviously some landscaping is shown there, and that'll be shown in more detail to meet the requirements in the SIP for terms of the two uses next to each other. So, you know, maybe as that landscaping plan gets developed, Sean and I can reach out to the neighbor and kind of sit down and maybe even meet out at the site and see kind of what would be a good fit there. I don't think, I see any, you know, as far as that particular setback, anything in the current, you know, set of exceptions that needs to be hauled up that couldn't be, you know, addressed in the SIP.
Because it's in the zoning code, is it, he, he's not asking, asking for flexibility on that one.
Correct, yeah, not on that side.
I, then I, I take it back.
And the GDP would give him this number of units, but it doesn't necessarily hold us to these exact setbacks.
Yeah, there can be some shifting, things like that, I think even your, you know, if we choose to go down the road of shifting that entrance a little bit to be more in line with the school districts, that, you know, I don't think there's gonna be any of these exceptions that would, you know, there would be further exceptions that would be needed.
Then I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon the comments made in the planner's letter and the developer working with staff and the neighbors.
Okay, we have a motion, there was a second.
Second.
We have a second, so any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, everybody, you can stay for the rest of the meeting, as I mentioned earlier, so. I've seen someone next to this, okay. Move on to item seven C, site plan review and possible approval of J.C. Park, Phase Two Park renovations. Give it just a minute for to clear.
Give her a minute? Big fiber.
We got a, we got a big, big plan if you want to bring up that.
That was easier than I thought.
Yeah, me too. I was, I was, I was pleasantly, there's some great comments, nice, nice comments from the folks, yeah. Okay, all right, Jeff, I think we can do it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, on to different things, so. The Phase Two project, we just, you've seen this all before, really very, very little changes, just Elise and I were just kind of talking about it, we said, you know, there's a couple minor changes that we would just want to make you aware of, and if there's any other, you know, significant concerns going forward with Phase Two.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jeff. Folks, thank you, but I appreciate if we'd move the discussion outside, okay, it's, please, they aren't hearing it. It's better, okay.
All right. So, just so you know, if, looking at this and, and hopefully you've had a chance to go through, you know, we're excited. Phase one is gonna be fully open this spring with concession stand and everything. That includes all of our parking lots, three brand-new ball fields, this multi, we call it a, a multi-use field or soccer slash rugby field, and all the pickleball courts, which have been in use and very much enjoyed. Phase two is the completion of the fourth field, an additional playfield up here, full-size soccer slash rugby field. And actually, there's two smaller fields that fit in here, so that's the completion of this. And then, and then we're actually making improvements to, and forgive me here, I get it wrong every time, stats or studs?
Stats.
Stats, thank you. And every time I guess, I get it wrong, I don't know why, but for a stats field, just a, a facelift of sorts with a new infield, a new bases. And then one of the things that we're doing is actually that the outfield fence will be removed, and we're going with a movable outfield, outfield fence. It's actually on wheels and it can be changed, so our, our plan with this is something that we can actually pull out of the way and be able to utilize this area for, say, fall soccer or something like that. So it's kind of a neat thing, we saw it out at DeForest. Have, have you ever seen that out there, it's kind of cool. I'm hoping my staff feels that it's kind of cool too, but it, it is, I think it's just kind of something neat, so to be able to use that and also a new scoreboard. One of the other additions with Phase Two is a forty by forty-foot, I'm calling it just a maintenance facility, so it's, do we have? Okay, actually, let me talk about the playgrounds, this next, Phase Two will have the playground, which includes the solid surfacing, I call it that spongy solid surfacing, which is expensive, but it's, it's, it's important because it's very low maintenance. It's also very accessible for people of all abilities. And so playground, and then we also have a small little bump-out area here, which we're calling it for adult equipment, and that's some balance and flexibility type, I think it's three pieces of equipment that we've worked with the senior center on those who, myself included, could probably use some time on the, you know, just getting better balance, working on, working on range of motion and that type of thing. And so this gives an idea, shows an idea of what we have currently in the design for the playground, it's really cool stuff. It also includes a lot of things for all abilities, like the spinners, which like when we have is, is, helps accommodate those even in wheelchairs, be able to lift someone on to the spinner. As well as some adaptive swing type stuff for a, a parent and child. A sensory booth type of thing for, we're finding, and we've been told for autistic individuals who want to kind of, they kind of like those closed areas and, and they have things inside there that they can do, so we're really trying to accommodate a wide range of people who will be using this park. I don't believe we show the, we don't show any of the adult equipment on this.
We were still kind of slumming by.
Yeah, right. But none of those merry-go-rounds like we all enjoyed when we were kids that flung you off in many different directions. I miss those, don't you? So anyhow, this, this, the, the building is very, very, very straightforward, but we're also adding some nice features to make it match exactly the brick and split face, or the, what do they call that, what do they call the polished? It's not split face, huh?
Burnish.
Burnish, thank you, I knew I could count on the architect to come through for, you know, that one. But basically matching the same colors, the same block as a concession building. And this is, we're keeping it a very simple building, there's not utilities in this building, we'll have a water supply outside. But it really is cold storage for bases, for, you know, bag stuff you need for the, for the marking and ATV and whatever we need for the, you know, managing the, the ball fields and anything like that, it's just functional storage space, which is huge for what we'll need out there. We envision allowing space for baseball, softball, soccer, that type of thing, to be able to store their equipment out there, just keeping it very straightforward. This isn't the current one, but, well, it is, it's, there was one that came out here, but this is the front, which is facing north, the north facade. And we actually have the Village Vorgon logo in here and, and on here, it would say J.C. Community Park, lettering above a orange treatment right here, along here, and then this is all the gray to match the concession stand building block. And, and then this is the gray that matches the soffit fascia that we have at the concession stand and the pavilion, which I, if you've noticed, we've rehabilitated up there. So that's kind of everything, there are trees being removed, we're not gonna shy away from, from that. It's part of what has, has happened on the rest of the park. We have made a commitment, we've been planting, actually in the last, just this last year, we planted over a hundred trees. Our next year's couple of projects will be filling in lots of spaces out, now that we've done with construction on Phase One, we'll start to fill in beyond what the architect put in there, because we want to, we want to put a lot of trees back in, we want to show the public on that commitment. The other thing that the Park Board had asked was, are there, are there reuses for some of these trees? And are there some, some uses as far as for milling or, or other? I met with a individual who, who we allow to use, that we provide reuse for, in fact, you're sitting behind one of those pieces right now. And so we toured and we identified about twelve, fifteen trees out there that we'll use for different use. And, um, so we toured and we identified about, uh, 12, 15 trees out there that we'll use for different uses. Quite honestly, some of it is okay use. Some of it is actually used for scrap to be able to use between the nicer wood for drying and, and kiln. But, um, some of them are pieces that kind of gnarled and gnarled? What do you call that? Gnarled, gnarled, whatever, that can be very attractive. But, um, we are making an effort to try to reuse, reuse and reuse some of the places or some of the, uh, materials.
I think the only thing, this was in the memo, but just want to point this out since this was discussed at the park board and village board. But just, there is a phase three to this plan, which is the actual lighting fixtures themselves. Uh, phase two though does include while we're digging other things up, um, putting in that infrastructure for the lighting. And a lot of that was done in phase one for those fields as well. So that's just continuing that. So, um, whatever it is that we get to phase three to actually purchase the lighting, put that up, all the infrastructure will be there. Essentially just be the equipment going up. So that should be a pretty quick, um, project. But I think that includes future lighting of, you know, some of the pickleball courts and.
Lighting of all four ball fields, um, lighting of the pickleball courts and lighting actually of both of these fields. Um, for, uh, nighttime games and, and kind of those late season when it starts to get dark early. Um, but our architect, uh, Rettler, um, really good idea of just say, let's, let's just, so when we're done with this project, we should be done with tearing up the ground. So we have all of the conduit in place as well as all the concrete bases and pedestals for the equipment. So then really the phase three, which, you know, we hope to do in hopefully a year to two years, um, will just be strictly an electrical contract.
They give you a tracer wire in those conduits so your tree planting project doesn't interrupt something or?
Um, good point. Uh, uh, well, yeah, there, there, um, well, there wouldn't be in those yet. That's a great point. Um, I do know they put in, they, they put in the strings, I know for, for.
For pulling.
Forehand, but.
Tracer wire.
They could just put a wire, conduct your wire and then you could locate.
Not a bad idea. I'll, I'll bring that up with them. But yeah, we're, we're pretty excited. We're really excited. The village board has sent full, full steam ahead. Um, and this is going out to bid.
Good.
Yesterday. But.
So what you tell me, we're going to have to, uh, approve the site plan? Don't you think that's kind of getting a little ahead of the things?
By two days. By one day, one day, actually. But, but no, I think we felt, we even discussed whether we really needed to bring this back before because there, there really, there's no, the only significant change honestly is the, um, the 40 by 40 foot building.
Okay.
And, um, that's about the only thing that's changed conceptually in the plan from the original site plan approval.
Need a motion to approve the revised site plan.
So. So moved. And I want to thank staff for thinking about matching the existing materials and knowing me well enough to clarify that before I.
I actually corrected the, the architect the other day. He, he said, he goes, well, you, you know, when I told him, I told, I gave him the exact, you know, what came off of the concession stand. And he said, well, you know, it's going to cost more money and I, and they were going to go with a split face. I said, no, I want it to look exact. Same, same supplier, same manufacturer, everything. And for that reason, I mean, I agree. I think it should, you want something to look like it was planned.
Right, not, not something odd that was just added to it later. Right, right. Thank, so we had a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Patrick, okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now you can send out your.
I'll let the architect know it's okay to.
It's okay to advertise for.
Okay, it's okay to still advertise it yesterday.
Oh my God, okay. Item D is review and possible recommendation of the village board for certified survey maps for zero lot lines duplexes on lot one and lot five, Oregon Parks Avenue. This is something we do, we haven't done for quite a while, but we do it often. So I don't see any reason why we can't, correct?
Yep, only kind of caveats here, you know, that, these are in our, that replat area we talked about for a long time with All-Star Properties and reconfigured a couple of different ways. But, um, now that the plat's in, obviously we've seen a lot of these, um, S I Ps come through because this area does have smaller lot sizes, smaller setbacks. So, um, this isn't kind of our typical zero lot line C S M, just because the lots are smaller than average to begin with. There was this, you know, kind of a narrower side yards and stuff, but it, it is still consistent in terms of, um, you know, what was intended there, I believe. Um, are both these duplexes currently under construction or just lot one?
One's finished.
One's, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. So, um, they're already going up and just kind of preempting the, um, you know, all the reasons we've talked about for zero lot lines. But, um, yeah, engineers take a look and that, that taking a look at this, there was a small revision that was submitted, um, I think, early this week or late last week after the packet went out. So, um, all the comments have been addressed though, so that updated version will make it to the village board packet.
Okay, how about a motion recommending approval?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Murray, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Seven E, echo, extraterritorial jurisdiction, review of certified survey map for Riviera Properties, County Trunk Highway Double M. Um, we typically again will take no.
No stance here.
No stance whatsoever on it and just acknowledge that, yes, it's okay. And that's what we'll do.
Yep.
Yep, no concerns.
Okay, move on to, uh, F. Selection of planning commission representative to the selection committee for the 2024 downtown master plan request for proposals. It's going to be, uh, February 19th. I'm going to be out of the country.
You always happen to be out of the country every time.
Well, not, I actually will be out of the country, but I'll be off the continent, so.
So just to clarify, we don't have these dates set yet. We're aiming for the week of February 19th. So it could be, could be later in the week, but it sounds like it'll still be gone. So, um, just forgot to bring this up when we were kind of talking about the RFP, then, um, obviously we're focused on the comp plan and other things. But we did get this, uh, published, uh, a couple of places before, um, the holiday and then a few places early this week. So this is out on the street and, um, due February 6th. Um, so we'll have a little bit of time hopefully to review, um, it with our group and before the interviews. It'll probably have some kind of a, a narrowing down depending on how many applications we get. Um, we are planning and probably having a couple of staff members as well as, um, locally our village president on the selection committee. But, um, I know some of you are working and have other commitments too. So just, um, I think it'd be helpful to have a planning commission member on the selection committee. I don't anticipate us interviewing more than three or four. Um, and typically we try to keep the interviews maybe an hour each, little break in between. We could be there, you know, we can kind of work with schedules to figure out how to break that up. But just wanted to see if there, is anybody interested so we can kind of start, um, getting some of those things scheduled and lined up for February.
There's the questions. Anybody interested?
I am legitimately out of the country. I actually returned on the 19th, so it would have to be later in the week for me.
Okay.
And, and I don't know if there's, you know, if there's a packet ahead of time or not.
Yeah, I would imagine, again, if they get in on the sticks, as soon as I get everything, the members on the selection panel would get an email with everyone's, um, review. And then we'd probably, um, set up a meeting or it could be a Zoom call or, you know, you could just send me an email or something ahead of time and say, you know, I definitely am interested in talking to A, B, and C. I'm not interested in talking to X, Y, and Z. And then we'll kind of come to some agreement and then determine, you know, who we want to interview and then I'll kind of work on the scheduling.
Go for it. Because, yeah, I'm going to be gone.
If nobody else is interested, I'd do it.
Patrick had first chance at it, so.
First right of refusal.
That's right. This, I am so proud of this bunch. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that very much. Okay, move on to director of community development reports.
Um.
We're winding down with stuff, aren't we?
What's going on?
Staff development projects. We're going out to bid, uh, yesterday in, uh, J C Park, phase two. Yeah, and, um, moving ahead with design on South Main Street. So from basically Elm, or not Elm, what is that, uh, State to, uh, Perry Parkway.
Perry Parkway, okay.
Yep, and sidewalk on both sides. Hip, hip, parade. And, um, yeah, and solving hopefully some stormwater issues over there as well. And, uh, so that's going to be, um, this next spring slash summer. J C Park will be dedicated and phase two will be underway this spring and summer. And, um.
Viridian's going.
Viridian's going, yeah. I think a couple of homes out there.
Couple?
Uh. You know, I haven't driven up.
You ought to hear all day long, the, the roofing, yeah, yeah. No, it's fine.
You sound like everybody else.
Hey, you proved it.
Just one of those, another one of those annoying old people that come along and.
I know, exactly.
Yeah, I got you.
But yeah, that's, I think, um, moving ahead, our, you know, our building permit process continues to be strong, um, which is, uh, a good, not overly overwhelming, you know, but it's, it's definitely strong. And, um, they still haven't started construction yet on phase three, bottom ridge, but I see rumblings that that's going to start here fairly soon.
I think they've, uh, by, back to Viridian, they've got one completely enclosed.
Yeah.
The other one's roofed, just finished roofing. They got another one dug and a foundation, I think just dug another foundation. So they're moving along quickly.
And, uh, um, North Point, moving ahead with their construction over there behind Mulligan's.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, and.
You want to mention the sidewalk for, for an army?
I, I, I did, I did mention to Scott, uh, it was brought up, uh, there was that little sec, section of sidewalk that is missing over there on what is the private drive of.
Oregon Center Drive.
Oregon Center Drive, yeah. And, um, I spoke with, uh, Sean the other day and, I think it's Sean, right?
Yep.
Yeah, Sean the other day and just brought it up and told him we would work with him and just like to see it, you know, if they could bring it under their contract. And he was more than, uh, happy to do that. So we might help him out a little bit with it, but, um, we'll see. But yeah, very, just very positive and, um, I'm glad to get, see it kind of connected because it's like one of those, it's like a missing link, right?
Yeah.
Especially when you look at it on the aerial photo, it's like, what?
Try walking in the dark.
One of us was sleeping on the job. I don't know. It's probably me.
Okay, anything else for us?
Two, two, two things.
Okay.
I have kind of a non-update on the post office, but I know a lot of people have been asking. So, um, the, according to Dan Burtler, who, you know, is going to be, owns the lot, will be building the, the building for the post office. The lease has been signed, but the kind of final green light to build is moving at the speed of the federal government. So, um, their lease with the village does end on June 30th, but there's a clause for that to continue. The rent does go up, I think, every month.
Um. Every week?
Every week. So it's meant to be, kind of move them along. Yeah, so, um, hopefully once they get the green light, it'll go quickly since the one-story building and, and fairly straightforward, one set of restrooms, that kind of thing. So, um, in your February packet, I'll have a little kind of PDF, but, uh, we're planning some community engagement sessions for the new senior center. Um, we're going to use our council on aging, I think about halfway through, uh, January is our, our guinea pigs. Um, but we've kind of developed an in-person, uh, event, which will have different boards, people go on and, you know, write some stuff on and try to get some feedback that wasn't collected in a survey they did last year. Um, we'll have another option for people if they're not able to make it, um, to be able to get sent kind of a survey form. But, uh, those sessions for the public will be kind of, um, mid-February through early March. So I'll have all those dates. Once they're just finalized, I'll have that, um, in your packet. And then later on, um, late March, early April, we'll have a online survey. Um, and we'll have some paper copies to just focus on the community gym. So we can also blast that to the school district, um, get some of those parents, those families engaged, other people that wouldn't typically be following, you know, just village hall type news blasts. So stay tuned for that, but that's been going really well and hopefully, um, we'll kind of have a report on summarizing the community engagement, um, by the Memorial Day or so. And then we can kind of move into the next phase there.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, guys. It was a good meeting tonight. Thank you.